It doesn't need it.
Can you all hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't, I can't, I don't, I can't see myself, not that.
No, I can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yeah, I don't know what.
You have to click where it says add video next to the new button on the side. It says join with it with a video.
I did.
Try it again, Mr. Moreno.
And I, hold on, hold on.
The little video camera is.
Oh, I know, but we got it last time, but as soon as you put it to shame, we're not using anything different, right?
That's correct.
So you have to add it, you have to put that you're adding it. The other one was already set up.
Well, it is now six o'clock. Good evening, everyone, and we're gonna get this meeting started. It is six o'clock and we will call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Roma Independent School District being held on this Thursday, April 30th, 2020 to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Agenda item number one, roll call, Board Vice President, Mr. Antonio, Juan Antonio Sainz. I think you're muted, Tony. But I see you're here. Board Secretary, Mr. Dagoberto Salinas.
Here.
Board Member, Ms. Leticia Garza Galván. Here. Board Member, Mr. Saul P. Moreno Jr. Board Member, Mr. Ricardo A. Perez.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Reynaldo Rodriguez.
Here.
And myself, Board President, Mr. Rizan Bialvaris. Let the record show that a forum is present. Although I, there's a few language, some language that I need to say here. Although members are not gathered in a central physical location, let the record show, we do have a forum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. Notice to the school district, a regular meeting to be held by video conference and teleconference. Board of Trustees, Roma Independent School District, April 30th, 2020. In accordance with Governor Abbott's Declaration of the COVID-19 Public Health Threat and action to temporarily suspend certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, a quorum of the district's Board of Directors will hold its regular meeting, regular board meeting by video conference or teleconference. The public will have the option to attend and participate in the meeting remotely by video conference or by teleconference. Instructions on joining the meeting will be available at the Roma ISD website at www.romaisd.com. Members of the public wishing to make comments, dear, public comments during the meeting must register by emailing cguzman@romaisd.com prior to 4:00 PM on April 30th, 2020. This meeting will be recorded and the audio recording will be available on the district's website after the meeting. A copy of the agenda packet will be available on the district's website at the time of the meeting. A regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Roma Independent School District will be held on Thursday, April 30th, 2020, beginning at 6:00 PM via video conference. The sun, the subjects, the subjects to be discussed or considered or upon which any formal action may be taken or listed below. Items do not have to be taken in the order as shown on this meeting's notice. Unless removed from the consent agenda, items identified within the consent agenda will be acted on at the time. Agenda item number two is the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Tony, and I will do the invocation.
If you can just notice that Mr. Saul Moreno is present.
I did. Okay, thank you. Now for the invocation. If we will please bow our heads. Lord Jesus Christ, we have come together in your name to work for the good of the students and staff in our district. Steady us in this time of uncertainty and pour your spirit upon us. Help us to be good and use your gifts with trust and love. Teach us to be faithful people in the, in this time of global crisis. Move our hearts in this time of pandemic and through your calm. Help us. Those we, help those we serve. And may we feel the light and joy of your presence. Bless us all who belong to Roma ISD and our community and bless us. Bless our discussions and decisions made with a focus on with you as the model for our servants. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One agent under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Agenda item number four, public comment. Agenda item number five, the consent agenda. Item eight, approval of minutes of previous meeting. B will be the approval of bills. C is the investment report. D is a financial update report. E is a transportation report. F is a tax collection report. G fixed asset report. And H is a student enrollment report. Do we have any questions at this time of any, with, about any of those items?
Give me, give me a second, Ms. Alvarez, because I don't have the. I don't have a hard copy, so I'm trying to get into my, through my phone. I'm having a hard time logging in, so let's go ahead and keep going.
So if there is no questions on those items, do I have a motion?
I still want my president to approve, to approve items. From A to, what is it? As presented.
And by Mr. Salinas in a second by.
Also in the motion.
By Mr. Sainz. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those again, say nay.
I'm gonna abstain, Ms. Alvarez, because I don't, I didn't have a chance to review them. I do have a question for, for Mr. Perez. Mr. Perez, where, where can we see the bills or payments made to any employee that, anything aside from their, from their base pay? In other words, any supplemental pay that they may be getting, for example, the bus drivers. They have their base pay and then when they do like the extra trips. Where, where is that reported? Or how can I get a copy of that report to see who are the employees getting supplemental pay?
That's in payroll, ma'am.
Is there? Okay. So that, that's not any bills that we approve?
No.
Okay, so that, who approves those?
That's part of their pay when, depending on the hours that they drive, the trips that they drive and all that.
So for example, if, if one of the directors works on Saturday, for example, do we pay them extra?
Directors?
Any supervisor or director or, you know, anyone like in, in those positions?
No, unless it's a workshop, it's approved, but very rarely, no.
They're not on the hourly wage, right? They're, they're exempt employees?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I requested some information from Mr. Guzman. Mr. Perez, I'm not sure if he already asked you for it. I, I know that you all are not working every day, but whenever you have a chance, I understand. I understand that, that it may not be in, within the timeframe. But whenever you have a chance, I'd appreciate that. If, if you need me to, to resend you that text, I will. Or if you want me to send you one and tag Mr. Perez, just let me know, sir, please.
No, it's fine. It's just as long as you're patient, like I had discussed earlier with you, you know, that right now we're only coming in for very specific needed duties. But as soon as we get back to normality, we should be working on those.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, so if there is no further questions, I have a motion by, by Mr. Salinas, a second by Mr. Sainz. Yeah, by Mr. Sainz, and it was six for it, zero against, and one abstained, one, one who abstained. And just for the record, any information that was requested by Ms. Garza Galván, if it can also be provided to the rest of the members, Mr. Guzman, thank you. Agenda item number six. Consideration possible action regarding change order number one for JROTC building, Mr. Perez?
Yes, after, we did a water pressure test here at the JROTC construction site. The fire marshal came in, Mr. Phil, and there is not enough pressure to run the fire suppression system. So after much review and going through all this stuff, the engineers, you know, there was pumps that were presented, but pumps wouldn't suffice. So it came down to a tank. And, you know, the engineers, architects, all of them went through it. We, we were able to negotiate it from, it started a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. We brought it down to, with fees and everything, to a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Mr. Perez, is it something similar like the tank that Ramiro has or very different or what? It's the, the same concept, except it's a smaller, it's a smaller tank, because it's only gonna serve the JROTC building. And it'll be, I guess, adjacent or next to that, to the building or. If you go to the last page of that item, it, it gives you an idea of where it's gonna be. It's towards the back, closer to Imaveira. And they gave us the option to paint it and we can have a JROTC emblem or a gladiator, whatever. You all choose or decide.
Madam President. I was under the impression that we accepted this contract with this company. And although I voted against it, because it was the highest, it wasn't the, the lowest bid. At that meeting, I recall that, Mr. Sainz, you said that you would be in favor of it as long as there would not be any change orders, if I recall correctly.
Yes, yeah, that is correct, Mr. Perez. And that's what I asked Mr. Perez, Poncho Perez, on this. And he, the, the answer he gave me is not coming from the company. It's actually coming because of the city. And I said, well, that we can't control that. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I did say that, that we're, I was not in favor of any change orders, and I'm not. I wasn't, you can tell, you can ask Mr. Perez when I called him regarding this.
There's a letter in there, if you all go to your, the packet, and it is a, a letter addressed to all of us as to why this needs to be done. And is there instructions or the, the request being by the Fire Mar, Marshal, Mr. Alfredo Garza? I'm sure if you all have a copy of it here, I'm sure it's, it's in everybody's packet. And explaining the reasons and the codes and everything that needs to be met. And for security reasons, I strongly suggest that we take action on this and take care of it as soon as possible.
Mr. Perez, when we put this tank, the building is not gonna be approved, correct? By the city?
They will not let us occupy, correct?
Thank you.
That, that's, that is fine. And I'm wondering, though, why is it that the, this wasn't, this wasn't part of the study to begin with and, and we would have been able to, to.
The issue with water.
It's like, like this is, this is coming after the fact. And here we are looking at, we're looking at a change order that, that is going to be quite expensive.
Correct. But whenever they test the water pressure, is this an ongoing deal when the construction's going on? The same thing happened back about fifteen years ago when we built Ramiro Barrera. We had to do the same thing because, because of the, of the water pressure also. And, you know, if you notice a high school area, the complex over there is higher than, than over here to the entrance to Roma. And even, even when the high school was built, some of those pumps that are, that are over where that power plant is at, I know the school district paid for them and had to turn them over to the city so we could get water pressure over there. And, and now even with that, we don't have sufficient water pressure. We tried to, to go, to go through different avenues so we wouldn't have to build a tank. But we, we even looked at maybe hooking up over to where the performing arts is at, but no, that would diminish the, the pressure at the, at the, at the pack. So, you know, after, and we even looked at, at placing inline pumps, that wouldn't be sufficient either. Mr. Phil was very helpful. He, he said, try this, you know, we check different things and know, and engineer said, this is, this is our only choice. And, and it would have happened, no matter who the contractor was, the water pressure wouldn't, would have not been there.
So what you're saying is that we did not know we had this problem even before we got started? I mean, we, you're saying, you're telling me that we have this problem, or we faced this problem when, when we built the Performing Arts Center and we had.
Similarly, when the Performing Arts Center, yet we had the problem, but at that point, a pump was sufficient. There's an inline pump for the pack. And when we built Imaveira, we didn't have that issue. For some reason, but now with this building, we, we're, we don't have, we don't have the water pressure.
On the letter, it also states that the fire department performed some studies or something back in July of 2019 and again in January of 2020. So they did discover or they did find out and they are requesting that we do this. This letter we received nine days ago on 4/21, and that's why I'm asking that we go ahead and take action on this.
Madam President, I have a question. Mr. Perez, when did we approve this project?
I believe it was August.
Okay, when, when did, when did the project go out for bids?
The, the what, the?
The JROTC project.
Early July, early July.
Early July?
Yes.
Earlier than July the second? Or was it after July the second?
It, it went, the bids went out before July 2nd, and I think we accepted them. I don't have the dates here. Well, you know, but I might, we accepted them. On the sixteenth.
July 16th?
Yes, ma'am.
They went out or they were accepted?
They were accepted.
When did they go out, Mr. Perez?
Out, probably about three weeks before that, more or less.
Okay, so, so we had a study done on July the second. And during that study, they told us very clearly that there was not enough pressure or water flow. What did they tell?
They had flow tests, ma'am. They had flow tests, and the engineers were working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
July the second.
And we have to, and we have to do more than one flow test.
Yes, there was two, I know. Mr. Perez, let me just ask my question and then you can answer me. July the second, there was the first test that was completed and, or at, or you were told on July the second that there would not be enough pressure, and, and maybe not you, but the engineers of the project, let's just put it that way, which are the ones that put out the specifications for the actual bid. So on July the second, they completed the flow test. It was completed by Mr. Eliezar Salinas. I don't have his company name, but I have a phone number if anybody needs it. He was asked to complete this test. He advised Roma ISD and the engineers that this was gonna be a problem for the sprinkler system at the JROTC. Why wasn't this added at that point to the bid?
When did he notify us?
Is that in writing?
Yes, well, you can ask Alfredo as well. I spoke to him earlier today. On July the second, and it's on the letter as well. So I mean, I miss, Ms. Clarice Alvarez just read it, but I have the name of the, of the person who completed the first test that the district was told, these were the exact words. Based on the hydraulic calculations, that there was not enough water pressure and there would not be enough water flow for the sprinkler system. So why would we not go out for bids at that point? And why are we waiting to do a change order now when this could have all gone to bid from day one? What was the purpose of that?
The bids were already out, ma'am.
What, what? Modified it before we approved it, Mr. Perez.
Well, that could have been done.
Gone through it once before in Ramiro Barrera, why would we wanna go?
But there was actually no recommendation on what we needed.
Exactly. The recommendation they're sending is dated the 21st, nine days ago. Yes, because there, there was communication by the person you're, you're saying, whether there was communication in writing or verbal or whatever, the request is being done by the fire marshal and they're sending it to us on April the 29th, 21st.
Well, but, but they, they asked him to write it on the 21st because they wanted to have a little backup for this change order.
Who's they?
Mr. Perez asked Alfredo to write the letter, but Alfredo.
Recommendation?
This is Alfredo's recommendation.
It, it's not his recommendation, it's a city ordinance. So it's not like he's saying, I, I want you to do this. He says it's, it's a city ordinance that has to be done. But what he is saying is that he notified the district since July the 2019. Well, that was before we approved this bid. Why did you all wait so that you can get a change order when we specifically said we were not gonna approve any change orders?
We didn't get anything on July 2nd, ma'am, and that, and those, those days we were not even here.
So then, Eliezar Salinas, Mr. Perez, do you know who he is?
No, I don't.
Can you contact PBK or the engineers to see why they didn't provide this very important information to Roma ISD?
Well, I mean, they were conducting different flow tests and they did two separate ones, and both of them came out the, the same.
Exactly. The first one came out the exact same way as this last one that was conducted just last week, when this change order was, you know, recommended. But this information Roma ISD has known, I mean, you're saying yourself, it happened to us in Ramiro Barrera, so it's not the first time. You know, I just feel that it was, you know, purposely left out so that we can have a change order later. Now, why can't we just?
Why would we wanna change order? We wouldn't wanna change order.
Previous practice, Mr. Perez. Let me go on to say, if this is the recommendation, we are gonna put it into vote, and if you wanna vote against it, you may do so. This is for the safety of our children. They are recommending we do it.
Excuse me.
A hundred and forty thousand dollars. So you either vote for it or you don't, and this is for the security of our children.
Okay, that's understood, and that's very noble of you that you keep implying that it's, that it's for the security of our children, which we all care about. But this here is, 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 we're talking about a hundred and forty thousand dollars now in this change order. And it won't sit well with me at all that, that we're getting a change order now at this time and that this should have been studied and taken care of prior to this time. I, I don't, I don't care for it. It's, it's not something that, it's something that I was afraid of that was going to happen, and here it is.
Yes, but a change order like this is something, if they would have, if they would have put it in the specifications back in July or June, whenever the bid was, it would have raised up the price also. This expense was gonna have to be made whether we did it back then or now.
Well, fine, Mr. Perez, but we could have at least considered it then.
Well, we would have had to have gone either through, whatever company would have gotten, it doesn't matter if it's a current company or the other bidder or whoever, this expense would have still have to have come through. Now, but, yeah, when we had all, everything out, yeah, maybe there could have been an addendum to the bid or, you know, or X, but we wanted to get this project going. We wanted to hurry up with this project.
Sir, the project had been on hold. I know there was a post by the JROTC, was it lieutenant? That was on, on hold for a very long time, so getting the project on the move, you know, one or two weeks later would not have mattered. It was on hold for like a month.
It's, it's, it was slowed down, ma'am. It was slowed down for several reasons.
And just as we continue with the discussion, we're obviously not gonna get it, we're not gonna move forward or backwards with this. So we might as well just put it into a vote, and if you don't agree, you just vote against it. If you agree, you vote for it. Again, this is a, a change order that's going to cost the district an additional a hundred and forty thousand dollars and change, which would have cost it right now or would have cost it back in January or in July of 2019 if we had been notified. We were notified or we were issued the letter on April the 21st, and this is the recommendation, and we're now gonna put it into vote.
But, but before we go to a vote, you know what, I'm listening, I, I just didn't like the, the comment that was made that we or somebody. I, that, now, now that's what I wanna know, who forced Mr. Garza to, in other words, do that letter?
Well, I don't think the word was forced, Mr. Moreno.
Okay, i- if he was asked, he was asked by who?
By the district. That's what he told me, sir. And I, I asked him if it was okay that I share this information. It was kind of like. It was literally requested from him to kind of prove that there was a need for the, for this actual project. My ques, I, I have one more question, Mr. Perez. Is there any way that you can, you know, get this, in other words, go out for bid just for that and maybe we can get a lower price? Why does it have to be?
We, we, we could go out for bid ourselves, but you're talking about another ninety days.
Why?
To get out the bids, to use the specs, to go through the whole process.
Isn't that just three weeks, sir?
It, it, we have to get these specifications again, we have to get the engineers to pull it away. And then, and then, then they have to come over here and be sure that they're in compliance with the current system we have. Right here, everything is ready.
This, this information, they've had it since July the 2nd, 2019, sir. This letter, there was information provided since July, so the, the information is there, but.
No, they had the information, ma'am, but there was different options we could have used. It, it doesn't necessarily mean that a tank was needed with a report that we got on July 2nd. It could have been an inline pump, it could have been similar type of pressure system. But at the end, this is what came up.
What was initially recommended on July the 2nd, 2019 is what came up.
Yeah, but the engineers have to come back and engineer it. It, they don't engineer from one day to the next.
When, when they found, when they found that those, those tests, Mr. Perez, is when you find out, whatever the pressure is at that time, whatever the pressure is, at that time, do you know, do I need an inline pump? Do I need a tank? Do I need four tanks? Do you find out at that time?
No, sir, you don't.
What is, that you need or, or, or you just, you, you just, in other words, it, it could be, it, it could be handled with a pump that costs, which I don't know what they cost, or worst case scenario, you need a bigger tank than what we're getting right now.
At that point, we, at the, at that point, we did not know. No, sir.
Mr. Perez, and what is the point of the hydraulic calculations? That's the point of that test that was conducted, to find out if there is enough water pressure or there is enough water flow so that you know exactly what you need before you go out for specifications. I mean, we just, we could just put it out for a vote, but you know, let's, let's not try to, to change things up here, you know, this is what it is. This test was conducted on July the 2nd.
And this is a very unique situation because we have this problem here in this, in this area. Other areas don't have it, and I'm not trying to defend architects or, or contractors whomever. But when, when they come in and they're, and they're gonna, they usually have water pressure, they have enough water pressure. Of course, I mean, I know we didn't have it because it was a south water supply. Over here, we have it because we're uphill and, and we've got other buildings up there, so there wasn't enough. Now, when, when, when they decided, or when they saw this, that there wasn't, now, it doesn't necessarily mean, like I said before, that we need it, we need a tank, we need this. Now, enough studies and all this and reviewing and engineers working on it, several engineers, then they came up, this is gonna be our, our solution for this.
What did the engineers get paid for?
What, the what?
What did the engineers get paid for before? Wasn't this part of their job? Isn't, I mean, are we gonna deduct this from their pay? The way we've done with other companies, when they don't do something to specification?
Ma'am, there's many things the engineers do besides this.
But this was part of their contract, right? To figure out and to go out for bid for the project in its entirety and to know.
But this is, but this is, this is a very rare thing, ma'am, underwater pressure.
But, but you all were aware of it since July 2nd, 2019, is that correct, Mr. Perez?
I was not, no, ma'am.
So you never spoke to Alfredo Garza regarding this?
I was not, no, ma'am.
And you never knew that Eliezar Salinas came in to do a, a study, the, the.
Not, no, not. I know, I know about the one in January, but I don't know about the one in July, no.
But again, at, at that time, it could have been, you don't know if you needed a tank. You don't need, you don't know if you needed three tanks, or you don't know if you could have done it with that inline. Am I correct?
Correct. We didn't know. Correct.
Mr. Sainz, you had a question?
Ah, yes, and Mr. Perez, remember when I called you and I asked you, okay, the issue is the city, right? The pressure, they're not providing the pressure. And remember when I called you on that, so why is Mr. Garza, Alfredo Garza, is saying that he was forced or asked to do this letter? If the, the, the problem is.
If the 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 problem is the city, it's not the school. We have to install it because for the safety of the kids.
The pressure from the city.
The, well, exactly, the pressure from the city. Are they willing to 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 put that pump? They're not gonna do it, and we know that.
But, Mr. Science, the thing, the problem there is, we we paid an engineer, we hired an architect. That's what an architect does. They have to know what they're gonna build. In other words, if you're building a house, your architect is responsible for giving you the bid price for the entire project. If you're not changing anything on your project from what you initially requested, how can they expect you to come and pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars more? Now, once the project was already approved.
The days I'm seeing, January the seventeen of twenty twenty, I I'm not seeing July of twenty eighteen that was conducted.
I don't have the letter, Ms. Alvarez read it a little while ago, but she she's the one that said the date.
I'm sorry, guys, but I think we've had enough discussion. We're not moving along, which is he said, she said, they forced, they didn't force. So we're just gonna put it into a vote. You vote as you wish. And uh, we're not hiding anything, we're not doing anything, we shouldn't be.
And just to make it clear and going back to the change orders that Mr. Perez mentioned. Yeah, nobody likes change orders because we know, uh, I guess the uh, the stigma or whatever it is that they carry. But the change order, we are not asking for a change order. We are not asking for a a different color of paint to be done. We are not asking for this light bulb to be changed, to be added. It is not us that is requesting the change order.
Did not force anybody to write a letter for a request.
But they're asking us to approve it, Mr. Moreno, so you are approving the change order.
I I will, but it's, but you know, especially, you should know when 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 a change order is requested, it's something that 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 you. It this is not something that I am requesting for them to change. This is something that is needed, that they're telling us that it's needed. It's not that I want to change the aesthetics of the building. It's not that I want for it to be a a different uh, floor that costs more. That is, that is a change order. When you have a floor that it's gonna cost a dollar, but yet you know what? I want one that costs now four dollars. That is a change order. This is not a change order. We did not ask for it.
We cannot avoid this.
That that is absolutely correct, Mr. Moreno, and I agree with you. We didn't ask for it. Uh, this seems to me uh, to be a dereliction of the of of what is expected from our architect and from that company.
Mr. Perez, Mr. Perez, I I'm sorry to interrupt. I asked the same thing, but it's like Mr. Perez mentioned right now. They don't, they don't tell you at the beginning, you know what, you're you're at so many pounds per pressure, whatever it is. You know what, you you know what, it looks like you're gonna need, you know what, it looks like you're gonna need a tank or it looks like you're gonna need two. Or or you know what, you're gonna be able to do it with the inline. If they would have told us at that time, I understand. You know what? They told us we needed that and you know. But that was not the case, this is the pressure is, you know what? As as things have maybe been fixed with that inline thing, like they mentioned before, which I don't even know what that is. It it wasn't, that's what I'm saying, but it's nothing that we requested to be upgraded. That's when a change order, you know what, let's upgrade something. I'm not gonna lie with you. I'll be the first one to say, you know what, we're we're adding, we're 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 putting in a a fifty cent anoleum. And all of a sudden, we're gonna put in a three dollar uh, tile, of course, and like post como, that's a change order. That that is a change order. We and and we, or I did not request for them to be putting a tank.
So, Mr. Moreno, remember the high school restrooms. We did not request to change in the tile either. And then all of a sudden, you have a contractor charging you three dol- thirty thousand dollars more too. This is something that should have been done. It's in the study. Roma ISD got the copy of the study. But I can tell you that the architects have a copy of the study. You can request it as well and you will get it and you will see that in the recommendation, there is the exact number of whatever it is that they needed, that they were recommending that's needed. It's what now is what you're gonna buy, but that was included from the very, very beginning on the report on July the second.
So so they told us at the beginning that we needed a tank?
Yes, they told you what you needed. It was there in the recommendation.
And they they never said we needed a tank, no.
They didn't tell you anything because you didn't know. You need to ask the architects.
That is the architects, I think, that is the architects knew that we were gonna need a tank. And they didn't tell us, and fun says, you know what, that that I, I don't think that would have been, uh, that's not, um, how can you say?
That was the guy I told about the the change.
I don't think they'd be do, I don't think that, in other words, I think we're throwing the contractors under the, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case.
There would have been communication with proper personnel at the school, and if it wasn't there, that means it didn't happen.
Can you please, uh, cause I know they're gonna make the motion just uh, before Ms. Alvarez hurries us hurries up, hurries us up. Can you please, uh, Mr. Perez, ask uh, P B K uh, for the report from July two, second twenty nineteen that Mr. Elia Sar Salinas conducted for Roma ISD?
And in addition to that.
In addition to that, the one that was after, when they tried to get away with not doing it. Uh, the one in January when they conducted the second one, because uh, they did not follow the recommendations from the first report.
And along with all that, please, Mr. Perez, uh, in addition, in addition to all that. Uh, so that they can prove to us when they notified us of that. When they sent that piece of mail or how email or whatever it was that we were supposed to have gotten. Yeah, that's whenever we had it. Okay, so having all that discussion.
So 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 in other, in other words, we're gonna end up uh, paying. Hold on, hold on, hold on. But uh, we're gonna end up paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars more, blah, blah, but if we don't approve it. That means that the whole project is gonna uh, be on hold, right? Basically, yeah, it's almost the same thing. Okay, that that's uh, what I wanted to know, okay.
And and yes, uh, this is gonna cost the change order request by the the construction company is a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and seventy nine dollars. That's how much more it's going to cost. If approved. Okay, so again, after all that discussion, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I shall move to approve item number seven. Let me, let me see my.
Item number six.
Sorry, hold on, hold on. Item number six as presented and uh, that's just, you know, work together, I guess. And uh, have the best work hits and hopefully we get some uh, positive uh, you know, uh, positive things on social media and this and this sort of negative things.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I agree. I have a motion by Mr. Salinas, a second by Mr. Moreno. With or Mr. Mr. Moreno, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. And all those against?
I will abstain.
I will abstain as well, uh, Ms. Alvarez. I wanna see the reports first.
So it's going to be five, four, and two abstaining motion passes. Uh, agenda item number seven, consideration and possible action regarding a solution of Board of Trustees of Roma Independence School District regarding class rank and GPA. Mr. Garza?
Yes, uh, good evening, trustees and Mr. Guzman. Based on the unfortunate circumstances that we are going through at the present time due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The high school administration and counselors agreed to temporarily adjust the local provisions addressing the class rank to ensure fair and consistent class rank calculations as well as designation of local graduation honors. To address these issues, Mr. Saldivar created a ranking committee. The ranking committee had several intensive meetings to review and assess the existing ranking local policy. And propose the fairest possible ranking modifications uh, to the policy. After several days of intensive discussions, consultations with two Taspi attorneys. Our Taspi policy consultant and our school attorney, the ranking committee proposed several recommendations. Based on the ranking committee recommendations, our school attorney, Mr. Stephen Weller, drafted a board resolution to temporarily modify our ranking local policy. The resolution is on page seventy eight and seventy nine in your packet. At this point, the ranking committee is asking for trustees to consider approving the board resolution as presented. At this time, we will be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
Sir, my, I guess my, one of my questions. Does this, I guess, because of course the ranking system was, I guess, changed and tweaked a little bit. Um, was, did this, uh, did the, does this move anybody? Does this affect anybo- I I how can I say this? The, does it, uh?
Uh, I I know what you're getting at, uh, Mr. Moreno, and that and that's a fair question. One of the things that I recommended to Mr. Saldivar and to the counselors was to whatever um, recommendation that we're gonna do, for them not to go and do the calculations. Uh, so they could present it to the committee. So they will say, well, if we go this route, this is the one that is gonna be the valedictorian. Or if we go this other route, this is gonna be the one that is gonna be the valedictorian. I instructed to the individuals, do not do the calculations, let's study this. Let's try to be as fair as possible and whatever decision we make, then at the later time, you can do the uh, the calculations. So, did it, did individuals go up or individuals uh, go down? Honestly, I'm not too sure, sir. Um, one of the major um, recommendations from the board, I mean, from the the committee was to consider stopping at the fall semester. Uh, if you look at the local policy, which I included in the packet. It states that the the fourth and the fifth, six weeks of the spring semester are supposed to consider for ranking. They're supposed to average those two grades or those two six weeks, and that is supposed to be, let's say, the uh, the last s- um, semester. The committee recommended to stop at the fall semester, meaning that the fourth and the fifth six weeks was not gonna be included for ranking. Uh, in addition, uh, when we address this uh, concern with the the attorneys and that legal uh, la- legal from Taspi. Uh, they stated that several school districts in the state, they go only up to the fall semester. They don't consider the fourth and the fifth. So, again, what we're doing, as you stated, we're amending, we're tweaking the existing policy. And this is only, not only for the seniors, this is for the freshmen, the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors.
Mr. Garza, how exactly is, uh, I know I I briefly went over that part, uh, but I was unclear. Um, how is this going to affect the classes of twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three?
Okay, that's a good question, Mr. Perez. And the ways, I I'm not saying that it's it's gonna affect them positively or negatively. But what's gonna happen is that, let's say, let's start with the freshman class. And then we'll go with the sophomore, the junior, and the senior. The freshman class, sir, um, the spring semester. It is gonna count for credit. That means that if an individual is taking, and I'm gonna give one one subject, let's say algebra. They're taking algebra in the fall semester. Okay, it, the fall semester is gonna count for ranking. The spring semester, which is right now, they're gonna figure out the average. But that average is not gonna count for ranking purposes. It will count for credit. Meaning that if the individual took the course and passed the course. That grade, whatever they get, is not gonna count for ranking purposes. The same thing for the sophomores, the same thing for the juniors, and of course, the seniors.
So that's gonna be every, everyone, the spring semester will count of twenty. The spring semester will count as credit, as far as credit is concerned, but not for ranking purposes.
That is correct, sir. And and the the example that I used was algebra. We're talking about the other subjects also. And you might say, you know, what is the reason that that you all come up with this? And again, it was a large comedian. We we met for several se- several days, several weeks. And this was the conclusion, uh, to be, again, if you wanna use the word, the fairest that we can do. Um, that that was the conclusion.
I I I appreciate that, Mr. Garza, as the reason I'm asking is uh, for clarification. Uh, is so that I'll be able to explain it should I be asked a question. Uh, and and you have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And not only that, Mr. Perez, but if the board approves this resolution, the goal is to um, inform the community, inform the parents, inform the teachers. We will pass out flyers, we will pass out mails, so they will be informed.
That's gonna be important in my, in my view, uh, because I'm sure that there'll be uh, there'll be some confusion out there due to uh, a misunderstanding of some sort. But uh, if if we can avoid that, uh, or we can cut it off at the at the past como quieren, then uh, uh, that would be very helpful to all.
And that is the purpose, or that is the purpose that, you know, or the goal, let's say, the goal of the district to to do that, to inform the community, to inform those students. Uh, at one point, I wanna point out, this is not part of the resolution, but it's gonna be part of the uh, administrative rules. That the spring semester, the fourth weeks, we will average the grade, it will be a numerical number. The fifth, six weeks, it will be a numerical number. The six, six weeks, it will be a numerical number. We will average those grades. But at the very end, we are gonna either place a P for passing, a NP for no passing, or an I. Even in case there's a particular student that was not able to finish the six, six weeks, that individual will have an opportunity to do it at a later time. Um, but again, that grade is not gonna come for ranking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garza. I appreciate uh, your explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Any other questions that you might have, that the trustees might have?
Madam President, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Garza, back to to Raul's question, I just wanna make sure. Uh, Raul, what, guess what you meant was like, is it gonna affect like the rankings from December, right? Like from what they were told in December? Until now, uh. Your answer, I I didn't understand your answer, Mr. Garza, is it?
That is what I was asking because I know that some of the kids already uh, kind of know where they're at. Let's 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 be, let's be honest, those kids that are, everybody, everybody's doing, everybody's doing their best. But we know that these kids, they 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 know their rankings and stuff like that. That, 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 in other words, what I'm getting is, what if we would have continued with the full year? And and I know it's 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 gonna be real hard to to to, I guess, like to guess, that, you know. Since we're cutting it short, in other words, that that's maybe like favorable.
It 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 is, if I may, Mr. Moreno and Ms. Galván. If the students were told, if the students were told, let's say, at the end of the fall semester, which was at the end of December. Let's say early January, if they were told, and I'm gonna use Luis Garza as an example. Luis Garza, the average happens to be this, and you happen to be the valedictorian as as of now, right now. Number two is Mr. Moreno, okay? You're the valedictorian. Okay, that that has already been determined as up to the fall. But that is not the final thing because we still have the fourth and the fifth, okay? So due to the fact that we're tweaking this particular local policy. Whoever had the average up to the fall semester. That means that it's supposed to stay like that. That means that if Luis Garza was the valedictorian as uh, um, in the fall semester, at the end of the fall semester. More than likely is gonna stay like that. Was it possible? Was it possible that if we would have considered the fourth and the fifth, that Luis Garza would have continued being the valedictorian? Possibly. Is it possible that the valedictorian, valedictorian, they're so close that by considering the fourth and the fifth? It could have changed? Maybe. But again, we're just gonna go up to the fall semester, sir.
Legal, legal, uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Weller uh, said that this could be done, is that correct? He advised us, uh, he advised the district, in other words, that uh, what we are doing here or what we're what we're hoping to to consider here is uh, is okay.
Uh, in consultation, Mr. Perez, with uh, two attorneys from Taspi. And also the legal, uh, I mean, the the Taspi policy consultant, which is uh, um, Kathy London. What they recommended is do not change the policy in the middle of the road. And I agree with him, do not change it. Can you modify it? The answer is yes, and that's what we're proposing. We're modifying the policy through a resolution. So can that be done? The answer is yes. Other school districts are doing that. So to answer your question, yes, Mr. Mr. Weller um, drafted the resolution based on the recommendation of the committee.
So this is all based on the committee, Mr. Garza, correct? And uh, and of course, those attorneys from Taspi and all that.
The attorneys, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Have you asked, what are other districts doing, or?
Some, ye- yes, I asked that question, and there are some school districts in the state of Texas that by local policy, they go only up to the fall semester. They only go up to the fall semester, they don't consider the spring semester. But in our case, and I'm pretty sure that, that there are other school districts, that they consider the fourth and the fifth. But we failed, the committee failed that to be the fairest thing to do, was not to consider the fourth and the fifth because of what's going on. I mean, we didn't finish the fifth semester, eh, the fifth, six weeks, it was in the middle of the road, and because of what's going on, the committee failed that the best thing was just to go to the fall semester, sir. But in order for us to do that, and because we're deviating from our local policy, that is the reason that we had to create this resolution, you know, for you all to consider approving.
Yeah, the resolution is for our local policy, not legal, right? It's local policy.
It is, is local policy, and the, and the policy that we have right now, based on, based on the ranking, it is local also. Every school district in the state of Texas, they have a different, different method of figuring out the ranking. Um, in our case, it, it is unique to a certain degree. Um, so we're modifying that particular policy.
You're, in your opinion, we're being fair, we're doing the right thing by doing, by adopting the resolution, correct?
And, and that is the thing, uh, eh, Mr. Science, eh, talking to the attorneys, what they stated was that we were not gonna find a perfect solution. I mean, they, both attorneys and, and, and including, uh, the legal, uh, uh, to, uh, policy consultant, she stated, eh, and the attorneys also stated, you're not gonna find a perfect solution. But what is the fairest? And to me, that is the thing, what is the fairest thing to do? The com- the committee concluded that, in their view, that this was the fairest thing. Did they take this lightly? No. I mean, we met several times, long hours, long hours, and they came up to, you know, to, um, to recommend this particular, um, recommendations to tweak the policy. So at this point, to answer your question, is it perfect? No. Is it the fairest?
Yes.
We're hoping that it is the fairest.
And Mr. Garza, if we had left it, uh, status quo, uh, if we had left it that way, eh, it would, it has been unworkable?
It was possible, Mr. Perez, the only thing is that the fifth, six weeks, basically, because of all this, we left in the, I don't wanna say in the middle, and a lot of individuals, uh, at the present time, they don't have the technology, I mean, we sent packet, the packets for them to do the, the assignments, and unfortunately, some individuals are, they don't have that technology, or they might have the technology, but they don't have the resources, for example. Uh, they don't have spectrum, they don't have other services that we, eh, you know, for them to do the assignments. So we failed that the fifth, six weeks was not complete, and if we were gonna do that, that maybe that was not gonna be the fairest thing to, to do, Mr. Perez.
I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but basically, you, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna water down the, uh, the process. Is that what you're trying to say?
If the pol- eh, the, eh, the pers- eh, the practice, let's say, the practice is to collect, let's say, two or three assignments per week, and one assessment every week at the high school. Well, that was the practice, we were not gonna do that, because a lot of these individuals who were still lacking grades, and we were not gonna continue using that practice or, eh, doing that practice, because we were not gonna complete those assignments. So basically, if you wanna use the water, I mean, the, if you wanna use the, the word watering down the fifth, six weeks, maybe some individuals felt that way, where they said it's better not to consider the fifth, six weeks. Well, it was gonna be very difficult to just consider one, six weeks, which was gonna be the fourth. And by the same token, the four, six weeks, sometimes, sometimes, in some occasions, eh, I mean, you used to be a former educator, um, sometimes they're not complete, because they haven't finished, or they were lacking a few grades here and there. So we failed, or they failed, the committee failed, that it was better not to consider the fourth and the fifth, six weeks.
Mr. Garza, if, if, Mr. Perez, if I may, if I may, we worked out of the six, six weeks, or the fifth, six weeks, we worked four, four weeks, and were out two weeks. And like Mr. Garza mentions, we, we didn't complete the other two weeks with assignments or assessments, but more importantly also, we didn't complete a six, six weeks, which also comes into mind, into, into the berry.
Yeah, and, and you know, the purpose of all this is, I'm not trying to prolong this, but I think we need to ask all these questions, because this is gonna be, this could be, uh, um, this could be, uh, uh, it is, it is, it's not gonna be, eh, it is gonna be a very weighty issue, it always is. And, and I want to make sure that, that all of us have a good sense of, of what we are going to be dealing with here. Um, because, uh, if we can get as many questions answered, plus the better, and with the more information that we have, so that we're able to, we are able to discuss this, uh, in, in an educated way, uh, with anybody who may ask us a question, that's, that's the purpose, for it's, I'm not, I'm not trying to prolong this anymore.
Eh, eh, Mr. Perez, this is, eh, this is a very critical, very important topic to discuss. Mi- Mr. Saldivar brought a good point a few minutes ago, where he stated the fourth, the fifth, and the sixth weeks. I was referring only for the fourth and the fifth for the seniors, but if you go to the freshmen, the freshmen, we're talking about the fourth, the fifth, and the six, six weeks. Remember, I mean, you're a freshman, that, you have to calculate those averages, so when you become a senior, three years later, you're gonna consider that particular grade. So that, that was what we felt, that it was not only gonna be for the seniors, but also for the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors.
I asked earlier, you know, how, how this was gonna affect twenty-two and twenty-three. If, see, if we're gonna be even with everybody, uh, that, that is something that, that, uh, uh, I find palatable, uh, something that I could accept, uh, so that there isn't anybody, I don't think anyone, one of us here wants to face somebody and says, no, because you were, you're being unfair with my child, or you're, you know. Uh, so, uh, I appreciate the, the work that the committee has done. Apparently, you have been very, uh, you've taken your time and, and, and worked hard with this. Um, if this is what you are recommending, then, then.
Eh, and Mr. Perez, and I appreciate your, those comments, and for the record, just for the record, someone might be asking, well, who was part of this committee? Every single administrator from the high school, including the high school principal, was part of that committee. Every single counselor was part of that committee. We had a facilitator that was part of that committee. Uh, the, eh, the gear-up individual, Lupita, was part of that committee. Two central office administrators were part of that committee. So we had a very large population with a lot of ideas, it was not just one or two individuals. So I just wanted to make, put it on the record, who was part of that committee?
Appreciate that, thank you, sir.
Mr. Garza.
Yes, sir.
I wanna, uh, commend you for, the, going back to one of your comments, that you said that, uh, some of the students don't have access to wifi or cable service, and I can hear in that, 'cause, uh, I myself, here at the house, I don't have, uh, you know, that services, so I have satellite, the, you know, wireless wifi, so I, I, I can hear, you know, I, I, you know, what, what some of those students are going through.
Yeah, I, I know, mistress, and you're not the only one, sir. We have individuals here in Roma, but they reside very close to the river, and they do have the technology, but the, the signal doesn't go to that level. So again, our, our goal was to be as fair as possible. You go to the, uh, balcony around those areas, they don't have those, those areas. And right now, the instruction is remotely, um, through different platforms. And again, our goal was to try to be as fair as possible, and this is what the committee concluded, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Yes, sir.
If y'all don't have any questions, uh, I'd like to make a motion, Madam President. I'd like to approve a resolution for our local policy regarding the class rank and GPA, as presented by Mr. Garza and Mr. Saldivar.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Science, a second by Mr. Salinas, if no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All against? Here, eight, seven, four, four, zero, again. Motion, Carrie.
Uh, trustees. Uh, trustees, I really appreciate your assistance and your support, and those questions, uh, really appreciate, uh, tha- that input, and our goal is to submit all that information to the, to the teacher, I mean, to the students, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, and to the committee for, for your devoted time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, consideration possible action regarding instructional materials, allotment, antiques, certification, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Mr. Noe Guzmán?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, every year we come before you, because we have to certify that the money that are in the EMAT, which are to buy textbooks and instructional materials, which the pages, uh, you know, have, uh, that are only being used for instruction in everything that's being checked off on that form that you all have there. Uh, and basically just saying that, that's what we're gonna be using these money for, for textbooks, which basically, that's the only thing we can actually buy, with, and instructional material, computers, et cetera, for the students. And so we just are asking for your permission, uh, to approve, uh, this allotment and antique certification.
Are there any questions, Mr. Guzmán?
I also move to approve item eight as presented.
Well, second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, a second by Mr. Science, if no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Madam President, I just have one question, uh, from Mr. Guzmán. Mr. Guzmán, I, I know, uh, text, the textbook committee, or, or this is for textbooks, is there any, any, like, uh, interactive textbooks or any of that, that we're probably gonna look into? Um, just because I'm seeing the situation now, and, and the situation like with my kids, I just don't see that, that we're doing, you know, what other districts are doing, or, or that we were not as prepared in, in several ways. Is there any, um, I guess, any, any programs or something that we can invest with this money for, for our next school year?
The, well, right now, always said that, that the money that the state has allocated will be for instructional material. One of the things that I have, uh, asked Ms. Vias, uh, is that when they are act, 'cause the next item is basically asking for the, the approval of what they want, from what company they wanna buy from. I'm gonna ask her to make sure that she buys things from that company that are interactive, that could help out, especially in the form of CDs, because if there's no internet, CDs will probably be the way that we might have to send these to those few people that have no, uh, internet connectivity. We, we could possibly give them maybe a laptop with a CD drive, and if they drop a CD in there, that would work. But, uh, I'm not very, very right with what Houston, Mifflin, Carport may have, uh, on their, uh, buy list, I guess. You know, that, and anyway, that's, maybe of the, the, the high school people, they decided that these are the companies that they wanted to buy it from.
Thank you, sir.
Go, and, and, before we finish, we're back to Ms. Garza, um, Galván's comment, um, that we, as a district, weren't prepared. Um, I thank everybody that's been going out to work, uh, teachers, administrators, uh, support staff, Mr. Guzmán, Mr. Garza, uh, on down, uh, I, I, I'd like to, if it's something that we're doing wrong, uh, eh, in other words, what is a recommendation to do it? In other words, I guess, in, 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 in another way, in, in what way were we not prepared? Eh, I guess, in comparison to other school districts, I think that Mr. Guzmán, uh, from the start, uh, took the reins and, and has kept us informed, is, is constantly, uh, updating, uh, the, the, I guess, the, the school district. Uh, so I, 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 I'd just like to know, in what way were we not prepared?
Uh, well, I mean, just because I have relatives in other school districts, Mr. Moreno, and I'm comparing to them. For example, I have my niece in Riorande, she's doing class with her actual teacher and the rest of the students, uh, two hours a day. Uh, two hours a day, she's taking lessons with, uh, with, you're, you're asking me a question, and I, and I'm answering. I'm not targeting anybody, and I, and I'm, I'm, uh, thankful that we have our teachers and that they're doing what they can, because I know my son's teacher and, and my daughter's teachers have been in contact with them, and have helped as much as they can. Uh, but I understand there was a training for teachers, I think maybe a day or two ago, and there was a lot of confusion. Uh, whoever was providing the training needed help from even some of the other teachers. The Google Classroom took pretty much a, a, a good while to get it started. Uh, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, and that, that's not the purpose, I'm just saying if there's something that we can do to be better prepared, so that our students, uh, have the same opportunities that other, as other districts have as well. I know, uh, even McCalleen, I have a niece there as well, they're doing three to four day, three to four hours of instruction per day. I might add to that, that I have, uh, friends here in this whole district that have been more than two and three hours. They're actually doing their whole day teaching or having repair and doing higher student. And I hope that all our students have that opportunity, Ms. Álvarez, uh, like I say, I have two students, and, um, that, you know, that's not happening with my kids, I don't, maybe, I don't know, they're being left out.
I, I, we, my wife, my, my, look, my wife is, is constantly, um, and I think everybody, and I think everybody that she speaks to, her, her coworkers, they're constantly talking about that the parents that they're talking to, what they're doing. Um, I guess, uh, I guess through, through Zoom, through how, uh, every, I think it's, I can't remember what it's called, but it's my understanding that they're doing that, that they're not signing on, that they're not, um, logging on. That is something that, one is parents are working, and I, I, I see that, because I've heard that, I know that some of those parents, so it's hard. Others don't have the technology, so, but if, if, I guess if we're not prepared, I'd like, I, in other words, have we, have we, have we ma- have we contacted, uh, I, Mr. Guzmán, Noe Guzmán? Have we contacted Mr. Garza, Mr. Carlos Guzmán, or anybody to tell them, you know what, Ms. Letizia Cadena, that I'm seeing, that joined us? Uh, have, have, have we done anything to see? Because I know that everybody, I, I've heard, I, I think everybody's pretty much doing something, I don't know why they haven't contacted, but I know that everybody's doing something.
I would like to say something and address Mrs. Valván at this point. I have been providing professional development, I was the one who provided that Google Classroom professional development. I've had eight classes up to now, for middle school teachers, for elementary teachers. And first of all, I start off telling the teachers, I am not an expert in Google Classroom. We cannot be an expert in every single platform that is out there. But we all took the initiative, because we weren't prepared for this, no one was. Very few districts, I know, because I attend technology directors' meeting from the entire region, and I know that it hit a lot of us surprised, we, we weren't ready. But that doesn't mean that because we were not ready, we sit back and say, well, let's just see what happens. We didn't, we took the bull by the horn, and we did what we had to. And I had been using Google Classroom, and you can ask around, with some of the librarians. Some of them were, took the bull by the horns too, and some of them, it took them a little while, like it does for all of us. We all don't learn at the same level, and even students don't learn at the same level, and adults don't learn at the same level, okay? So when I started the presenting those, those, uh, professional development sessions, that's the first thing that I, that I told them, I don't know everything, but I'm gonna help you with what I have, with what I know. And I did reach out to teachers in the community, I didn't have to, but they are the experts. And I asked one of our teachers, and I'm gonna say his name, Mr. Noe Salinas, he has been using Google Classroom for about a year, or maybe even longer, and he's very familiar with the grade part, with developing, uh, forms. I developed forms here for the district for surveys, but I don't use an answer key, he does. So why not use the resources that we have? They are the experts, and teachers like to hear from other teachers. So I invited him to be part of the presentation. The librarians have also been part of those presentations, because they are more familiar than I am with the digital resources that are out there. So if that person felt that I wasn't prepared, well, I apologize, I was as prepared as I possibly could, and I will continue to do these professional development sessions. We've already targeted middle school, we're currently working with elementary teachers, and sometime next week, I will start developing some sessions for high school, and the pack teachers, and anyone else who wasn't able to attend the session. We've had sessions that last two hours, they, some of them are, Monday, we had three sessions, from ten to twelve, from two to four, and from seven to nine. And I think they were referring to that session from seven to nine, because I was at home with my laptop, and I couldn't, I had to restart it several times, and maybe that's, that was the, the problem. And I did tell them, sometimes technology fails, and we need to be ready. As teachers too, and as presenters, we need to know what, even right now, if we were to, some, one of us were to lose connection, what do we do? Well, you go back on, and maybe you lost two or three. two or three or five minutes of instruction, that's okay. So I just wanted to clarify that at this time.
I want to say something real quickly also.
Let me just answer Ms. Cadena, Mr. Guzman. I didn't mention Ms. Cadena's name at all, so, so I don't know, you know, where that's coming from. And I'm glad that you did reach out to someone that has a lot more experience in, in that area, Ms. Cadena, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm glad that you're taking whatever resources you know and that you can use as, as technology director to improve for the whole district, you know, what needs to be improved. But you said it yourself, we were not prepared, and that's all I said here, I'm not trying to affect anybody, I'm not trying to, you know, we're, we're all here, all of our kids are here, well, I mean, my kids are here. So that, that's not the purpose, all I'm trying to say is, what can we do so that we're more prepared for the future?
And, and it takes a lot to be prepared, because it doesn't just take the resources, the, the hardware and the connectivity. It takes the, the teaching, the online teaching, online teaching is not easy. It's, it's hard, it takes a while to become, to become accustomed and comfortable with that setting, and I know even you right now that you're working in this platform, that you're having your meetings, I'm sure at the beginning you were a little apprehensive, like, where do I mute, where do I unmute, where do I take the picture, I don't want to be on, on the video right now. And these are things that our students also have to learn, so it's going to be a learning process. But I can tell you that the teachers have been very receptive, they have. And we not only talk about Google Classroom, we talk about, okay, so, and I'll ask a teacher, okay, so how many students do you have in your classroom? Well, eighteen, okay, out of those eighteen, how many have you been able to communicate with? Well, fifteen. So what do you do with those others, other three, ma'am? Have you called them? Have you told your administrator, your campus, because I always think that we don't want to call someone else, we, we, we follow the chain of command, right, so I tell them, talk to your campus administrators and check where, where are those students, why can't we find them? So all those things, I can assure you are being addressed, they are. And maybe some teachers, like I said, still don't feel very comfortable using the, the Google Classroom or whatever platform they decided to use. But we are doing, I want you to know as much as we can, and, and the teachers are doing a phenomenal job, they, they really are. They really are.
And, and, and going back, and it's just going back to being prepared, this has never, ever been seen. I don't think anybody is, was prepared for this, because I, 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 at the bank, I'll use the bank as, I work with disaster recovery, nobody, right now, people are still trying to figure out what they're going to be doing, if somebody sits. So this is, this is, has never been seen before, I guess once this is over, yes, we'll be better prepared, just like we've everybody prepares for things that have already happened before, but this is, I think is real hard to prepare, I think as a I think we can say as a country, we weren't, we, 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 we weren't prepared as a nation, and so, so it trickles down, but it's real hard. I, I don't see anybody being prepared for this.
I need to add, Mr. Guzman, again, I must congratulate you, I know I've told you individually and Mr. Garza and your entire staff. I, I've seen it firsthand, I've heard it from multiple school district friends that I have at school district and teachers in our own of how prepared we were, of course, as best we could be prepared, how proactive we were since the very beginning and continue being proactive. And again, there's, I can't express enough my gratitude for everything you've done for our district, and will continue doing until hopefully very soon, we're able to bring our students back to school where they belong. Ms. Cadena, you've done an awesome job too.
Thank you, well, I think we, we all have, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to say that, that even today, we were nationally recognized, one of our teachers. I've gotten so many phone calls from superintendents, you know, asking for advice, and it's not me, it's not, it's our teachers, our teachers have really stepped up to the plate. They've done an awesome job, I want to commend them for that. And there are proper channels, there are teachers just like students that live in areas that don't have internet access, so if a parent has a concern, this, it's not Facebook, it's not here, the platform that we should be using, contact the school, contact me, contact the teacher, and maybe that teacher just doesn't have the access, but I can assure you that Roma ISD continues to be one of the forefront best districts in the, in, in the region and in the state when it comes to educating our kids and, and providing the lessons that are needed, and we will continue being there. Like I said, just today, we were recognized, one of our teachers was, you know, recognized nationally, and
That be, is that, is that going to be public?
Well, if you didn't see it already, it was our, our, my teacher that was, that came out and, and you, somebody want to elaborate on that, but again, this is not a platform to, 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 to if there are concerns, there are other platforms, right now, we want to celebrate, and we have a lot to celebrate as a district when it comes to instruction.
Definitely. And, and we will touch base a little bit on that as we move, as we move on with our, with our meeting. So right now, I do have a motion for agenda item number eight by Mr. Moreno, and the second by Mr. Sines. Do, okay, any further discussion on that? And if not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those against? So it is seven, four, zero against, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, consideration possible action on adoption of textbook committee selection for middle school, Mr. Noe Guzman.
Now, the high school is the one that was doing the selection for textbooks, Ms. Vias was one that was working with those committees. But you do have a paper that has who are the committee members representing each of the grade levels and courses. And what they are basically saying is that for the English Language Arts and reading books, which are English one, two, three, and four, they want to go with Houston Mifflin Hartford. And for the English as a second language, ESOL, ESOL one and ESOL two, which are for bilingual students, they're also going with the same company, Houston Mifflin Hartford. And these are the ones that they're going to be buying, and I know that I, I said earlier, one of the things I, I am asking Ms. Vias when she meets with them, is to really look into anything that we can use with our kids that are internet based or video based, because we will probably need those if this thing were to linger all the way through next year. We're asking for you to approve the purchase for these books from English one through four and ESOL one and two.
And this is what the committee's recommending?
Yes, sir.
I so moved to approve item number ten. I'm sorry, nine as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, and a second by Mr. Salinas. If no further discussion, all those in favor say aye, aye. All those against? Seven, four, zero against, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Guzman. Agenda item number ten, consideration possible action on missed school day waiver, instructional continue, continuity, continuity as a test, a test station while closed. Mr. Guzman?
We're going to be we used to be postponed for the next meeting. Right now, we still have to do one thing with SBDM before we actually come back with this, and we will add another, there are actually three items that are three different waivers. And there's actually a fourth one that just came out again today that we will be adding on to this. But, but it will be for a future meeting, we're asking for it to be postponed for the next meeting.
So you're asking for this item to be postponed?
Yes.
Ten, eleven, and twelve, actually.
Ten?
And eleven and twelve, yes.
Do we need a motion?
No, they're postponed, just no motion.
So then we'll move on to agenda item number thirteen.
We don't need a motion to postpone?
That is correct, no motion to postpone, we're, we're just going to go ahead and place it on, on another agenda later. Now, we're just letting you know, there's no action, right now, it's just being postponed.
But, Mr. Garza, and I just want to, just for the record, do we have to make, and I'm just, I just want to make sure, do, do we have to make a motion to postpone?
I, I don't want to contradict Mr.
No, and I don't, I, I just don't want, I just don't want to come back later on and saying that you should have done this, because you don't know what you're doing, you know, I just, we just want to get it right.
You recommend that we postpone, that we take action to postpone? It, it, it is my belief that we, we might want to postpone for a later meeting, but I
That's fine, but we don't, we don't need to make a motion to postpone?
We'll go ahead and do it, we'll go ahead and do it just for the so let me have a motion for agenda
One by one.
A one by one, agenda item number twelve?
In other words, no, I guess we can make, make a motion to postpone items number ten, eleven, and twelve.
That's correct, Mr. Moreno, wait a second. Okay, so I have a motion to postpone agenda item ten, eleven, and twelve by Mr. Moreno. Second by Ms. Galván, all those in favor say aye or raise your hand, say aye. And all those against? Motion passes, seven, zero, seven, four, zero against. Agenda item number four, thirteen, I meant thirteen. Campus and district improvement plans for twenty nineteen twenty twenty, Ms. Cadena?
Good evening again to all of you. And you, you have copies of the campus improvement plans that were submitted to your review. I would like for you to please note that there are several plans that are missing due to the fact that by the time I had submitted those to Mrs. Esther Guerra, she had already released the board book. And I know that when they, when she releases the board book, it's stamped, I believe with the time. And usually we do not, we don't retract the, the board book, okay? So those campus improvement plans will be presented at the next board meeting. So right now, I believe you have five campus improvement plans. Then you could, I don't know if you all have any questions regarding those campus improvement plans?
Those are updated, who's, there's like a committee for that, Ms. Cadena?
Yes, every campus has
I would imagine it's the principal, the assistant counselor and stuff like that, or how does it work?
They have what they call a site-based decision-making committee, which we, the acronym is SBDM. And every campus has a committee made up of at least two third percent of teachers, community members, parents, and of course, an administrator, and also a district administrator. And they get together and they look at their comprehensive needs assessment, and they decide what they need to change or what they need to add to their, to their commit, to their campus improvement plan. Then that campus improvement plan is reviewed by district administrators. For example, Mrs. Cruz reviews the migrant section and the title to, title, all the title programs to make sure that they are in compliance with ESSA, which is, oh gosh, I already forgot what ESSA stands for. But it's what we place, no child left behind, okay? And for example, the bilingual director looks at the bilingual section, the special ed director looks at the special ed section. I look at the technology section and library section, and every, everyone, everyone takes a, a look at that, at that plan to make sure that it's in compliance. And something important, I think, that you all need to know is that the auditors, when they come in, in the fall, they, what they do is they pull out, like, let's say, a particular PO, and they say, okay, so you all used this PO to provide professional development for your math teachers. Where is that in your campus improvement plan? So there has to be that correlation between the, what you say you're going to do and the money you're going to spend with what actually does happen. And, and they do ask for, for documentation.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Cadena? If not, do I have a motion?
I so moved to approve item number thirteen as presented by Ms. Cadena.
I'm sorry, who was the second? I have a motion by Mr. Sines, and a second by Mr. Salinas. Again, if no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand, anyone against? Seven, zero, motion passes, thank you, Mrs. Cadena.
Thank you very much.
And then the item number fourteen, consideration possible action on approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Mr. Guzman, great session that we're having, very different, I like it. I'm coming for you to present the voting results for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar. You should have with you a copy of the three calendar options, as well the results of each campus and the overall results. Every campus principal and the district had an opportunity to meet with their respective staffs, their PLCs and SPDMs to discuss and provide input and recommendations to the district calendar committee. Input was also received from the district DIC committee. Based on these recommendations, the calendar committee created three distinct calendars. The calendar committee was comprised of campus, principals ranged from elementary to secondary. This year, for the first time, voting was online, I want to thank Ms. Cadena for helping us set that up. That was very, very beneficial, especially with what I think is going on. There was a three and a half window for teachers to cast their ballots. The voting window was between March twenty-fourth and April seventeen. Based on the results, calendar option three was overwhelming choice with fifty-eight percent of the votes, and seventy-nine percent of our district teachers casted a vote. Therefore, I am recommending calendar option three for approval as the official twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one Roma ISD academic calendar. Are there any questions?
Option three, sir, right?
Option three, yes, sir. And if you notice, they were all very different, if you look back at the, especially in November, that was the deciding factor. Teachers want that week off for Thanksgiving, but of course, we have to it's have to be balanced somewhere else, so, but that's what they went with. And also, we have graduation on the twenty-ninth of May, it's on a Saturday, that's the way for, for next year. And so, but that's what the teachers voted, overwhelming majority.
If that's what they want, then that's what it is, I so moved to approve item number fourteen, I don't have the fourteen, fourteen, fourteen as presented, I don't have the agenda, the iPad turned off, item number fourteen as presented.
Is option number three?
Option number three, yes, sir. Option number three.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, a second by Mr. Sines, if no further discussion, all those in favor. All those against?
Let's just
I'm sorry?
Let's just keep praying that the students go back safely.
Motion, that motion passes, seven, zero, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you.
Agenda item number fifteen, employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals, Mr. Guzman?
You're mute.
We can't hear you, Mr. Guzman.
Sorry.
There you go.
It didn't change, there are no hires, but there are some retirees and resignations.
If there is no questions or discussion, do I have a motion?
I so moved to approve the, you said it, only resignations?
Right.
Resignations and retirees.
And retired.
Okay, resident, retirees, as presented by Mr. Guzman.
Do I have a second?
I second it. There's no summer school hiring here, right? Yet, the, the summer school is not
No. I have a motion by Mr. Sines, and a second by Mr. Salinas, if no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand or say aye. All those against? Seven, zero, I'm sorry, six, I'm sorry. There is a correction for agenda item number fourteen, it is six, zero, because for the record, Mr. De Rodriguez left at seven twenty-three. So the, the voting for item fourteen was six, zero, one absent. And agenda item number fifteen, which is the one we're talking about right now, is six, zero, one absent, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Agenda item number sixteen, teachers' contract recommendations, Mr. Guzman?
As presented, recommendations by principals have been, are my recommendations.
I so moved to approve as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, second by Mr. Sines, if no further discussion, all those in favor. All those against?
I have a question. I'm not, I have a question. Mr. Guzman, what's the difference between a probationary contract and a term contract?
Probationary contracts, Mr. Garza can probably answer that better, probationary contracts are only allowed up to four years. And they're for one year and there's probation, they have less rights than the term contracts. Mr. Garza, is there something very specific that you want to mention as a difference?
No, I mean, you, you said it right, sir. Probationary contract is usually for individuals that come in for the very first time. The, the state allows for, for you to recommend individuals maximum of four years. Now, when I say usually, because you can have an individual that might come from another school district that might have, let's say, twenty years of experience. And might have a term contract in another school district, but when that person comes to, let's say, Roma for the very first year, you're obligated in giving that person a probationary contract to see how that person functions. Then after that, then you can recommend it to a term contract. So if you want to say that a probationary, that a term contract might have a little bit more rights to a certain degree as far as keeping his or her job compared to probationary, yes.
Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
And I, I might sound a little, you know, kind of ignorant, but probationary for four years or five, that means more into grammar, you know, explanation, meaning that they have four, five years to master their, their, their.
For the principal, for the principal to say, I feel satisfied with this particular individual, the person comes the first year and usually, when I say four years, the person will give a, will get a probationary contract the first year. If the principal feels comfortable with that individual, that person can be recommended for another year, which will be under a probationary contract. That person under the second year, the principal feels like this person is not doing his or her job, I don't feel comfortable, I, I have been helping this individual, but I don't feel comfortable, well, at that point, the principal can recommend non-renew. That means that that person will not be coming in the following year. But if the principal feels that, no, this person is doing fine, I will recommend them another year. That person on the third year will get a probationary contract again. Now, at that, at the end of the third year, if that principal feels that, well, this person is marginal, this person is in that gray area, I feel that I can still work with that individual and I will still recommend that individual for another year under a probationary contract. Legally, it can be done. After the fourth year, after the fourth year after being under a probationary contract, the principal has to say, I'm going to recommend this individual under a term contract or probationary, I mean, and that's it, or I'm going to recommend a non-renew. So basically, the state statute allows the individual to be under a probationary contract, maximum of four years. Under a term contract, it is a little bit more, quote unquote, a little bit more difficult to, let's say, terminate or non-renew that individual. Can it still be done? The answer is yes.
Mr. Garza, are any of the teachers that are being recommended here, any of the ones recommended here pass the four year probationary period?
There are some individuals.
You couldn't hire anybody because they automatically go into a term contract, is that, that's what they told me, so is there any, any teacher here that is past their four year probationary contract that's being approved today?
If the individual agrees to go back from a term contract or a probationary contract, that person agrees to do that, then the individual can be given a probationary contract, assuming that the person agrees to go from a term contract to a probationary contract. So to, to answer your question, some individuals decided to sign that letter, so that means that that individual will be moved from a term contract to a probationary contract, so the answer is yes, ma'am.
So we do have someone who was past their four year probation period who should have been resigning, right? Because usually after the four year, after they, they surpassed their four years, they're asked to resign because supposedly they cannot be recommended, even if their principal wants them, because then automatically they will be a term contract employee, right? Well, that's what you told me.
Let me, let me try to explain just real quickly. If, if a person has a term contract, they can actually go back down to a probationary contract.
Correct.
But somebody that has four years probationary can't continue probationary.
Okay, so anyone on this list, Mr. Wussman, let's be specific, the last recommendation I'm seeing says term contract. The very last recommendation here, not going to mention any.
Please, please, yes, please don't use names.
No, no, I won't, Mr. Garza. I know, that's only executive session, but the last thing here, this person is, is the only person on this list being recommended for a term contract. Does that mean that he already passed his four year probationary contract? So he's automatically being renewed as a term contract?
Even individual.
I don't have the list with me, but it could, that could be the case, or it could be that they only have three years probationary and then the principal, for whatever the reason, might have said, this teacher deserves a term contract already. But again, I don't have the name.
Mr. Wussman, because this teacher was at another campus and was, you know, all of a sudden just moved to another campus. So it doesn't make sense, and then that, that campus principal was at, or, or wanted to recommend one of her teachers that was under a probationary status, and she was told that she could not do it. So I'm, I'm just wondering why you let one person be recommended and not the other, and we let somebody go or, or force somebody to resign?
If, if I, if I may, an individual, an individual can be under a term contract for, let's say, three years. If the principal feels that wants to recommend that individual under a one year term contract, not three, but one, that person can do that. Have we done that in the past? Yes, in several locations. If the principal does not feel that that person should get a three year term contract, but is still under a term contract, but is going to give him, or is going to recommend a one year term contract, yes. Legally, it can be done. A lot of school districts in the valley, what they do, they don't give a, a three year term contract. They just give them a, a one year term contract, and a year to year, they get a one year term contract. So if the person has a, a three year term contract, and at this point, the principal decides, I want to give him a one year, one year term contract, it can be done.
Mr. Garza.
This person did not have a probationary contract. This person had a term contract.
Why did you consider only that person out of every single person who has not passed their bilingual test, Mr. Wussman? Let's just make it very clear. Why was this the only person who was considered for a term contract?
He was already, he was already in a term contract, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garza.
Why was he a term contracted, he has not passed his test?
Because he got a contract before the rules came into play, that's my, that's my understanding.
All of these teachers that are here before have been there longer than he has, Mr. Wussman.
Mr. Garza?
There are several individuals that have been recommended for a one year term contract, that is not the only person that has been recommended for a one year term contract. We have several individuals that has been recommended for a one year term contract. If you look at the list, we do have several individuals, and I can, there's a good high possibility, a high possibility that in the near future, or five years from now, ten years from now, a principal will recommend an individual for a one year term contract instead of a three year term contract, that's possible.
And that's totally up to the principals to do their jobs and do their own.
Yes, yes, if, if an individual, if an individual has been teaching, teaching for fifteen years and that person is fully certified, but that person has been declining in the performance, and that principal feels that, well, I'm not going to recommend your termination, but this is going to be a slap on the hand, you have to better shape up. If not, I'm going to recommend non-renew, but for this time around, I'm not going to give you a one, a, a three year term contract. I'm going to recommend you only for one year term contract. So if that person sees that the colleagues are getting a three year term contract and this person is getting a one year term contract, to me, that should be a, a red flag for that individual that, like, I need to shape up, I need to do better, because there's a possibility that I might not be recommended next year, I might be non-renewed.
Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garza, the teacher that was asked to resign, the teacher that was asked to resign, you know, you know who it is? This teacher, this particular teacher was obviously in the same position as the teacher that is now being recommended for a term contract. Why was one given the opportunity? You, you, this teacher was actually moved from another campus, put into the campus where the other teacher who was asked to resign was at, and then we made the other teacher, or the district made the other teacher resign, and then we left this other teacher at that campus. I'm just wondering what the difference is.
Okay, there, there is a difference, Ms. Galvano, and again, without mentioning names, I'm going to be very general. One individual is under a term contract. At the present time, we're creating paper trail, if you want to call it, we're giving verbal and, and written warnings to the individuals, you better get certified as a bilingual teacher, if not, there's a possibility that you're not going to be renewed, okay? That particular individual that transferred from one campus to the other one, the difference between that person and the other person is that person has a term contract.
Let, let's just say, instead of saying very specific stuff, let's just say, let's assume, assume that, that in, in another district, we have an individual with this scenario, rather than, than, than use individuals.
Right, and I'm not planning to use names, I'm not planning to use campuses. I'm yet, I'm saying this person is moving, it was transferred from one campus to the other one. That particular individual, okay, or has a term contract, not a probationary contract, has a term contract, okay? That's one. The other individual, or any individual in this particular case, were not forced to resign. I want to make that clear. Options were given to that individual. Options were given, two options were given, in verbally and also in writing.
What were the options, Mr. Garza?
The option is, in general, and we have done this in the past, you either, I mean, one option that you might have, you might want to consider resigning. The other option, there's a very high possibility that the superintendent might not recommend, you might recommend non-renew for next year.
Termination.
Non-renew. Non-renew.
Those are the two options.
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I want to make that clear, that when I speak with these individuals, they're not forced to resign. They're not forced to resign. Options are given to those individuals, and it's up to the individual to decide what, what option they want.
No, and, and my question from the beginning, Mr. Garza, it's, I mean, I, I don't know why, I'm not getting an answer to this question. How did somebody who was not bilingually certified, the, the only one in the district who is not bilingually certified, get a term contract? And all the other ones are getting a probationary contract? Every other person who has not passed their test has a probationary contract, and then we have this one person who has a term contract, and he's in the same boat as everybody else, so that, that's the, that's my only question.
And, and if you look at the, if you look at the recommendations, or, you know, in private, or you can give me a call, you can stop by my office, you know, I can provide you a list of individuals that are under a term contract that are not bilingual certified, so this person is not the only one, I want to make that clear. That person is not the only one. Is not the only one.
Just off the top of your head, Mr. Garza, how many would we have, ten, fifteen, twenty?
Individuals that are not bilingual certified, I'm talking about bilingual certified.
With a contract.
We're talking about, yes, with a contract, we're talking about, I will say.
A term contract, Mr. Garza.
Yeah, term contract. Individuals that have term contract that are not bilingual certified, I will say less than ten.
Okay, so there is not only one.
Right, and those individuals, those individuals have been recommended not to get a three year term contract, but to get a one year term contract.
But it's a term contract.
Because they already, they already in a term contract. They have been in a term contract for several years.
Okay.
For several years.
Of those ten, Mr. Garza?
Less than ten.
Okay, of, of those less than ten, how many of those were fully certified bilingually and in every single area when they got their term contract?
You're not.
They were not bilingual certified.
They were at another, when they were in another position, let's say.
They were not bilingual certified. They were hired, those individuals were a hundred, they were certified, they were certified, but they were not bilingual certified.
Okay, let me give you an example, you have an elementary teacher that moves to middle school. The elementary teacher was fully certified and bilingual and content, everything, fully certified. Then the teacher decides to move to middle school or high school. She's certified except bilingual, because now she's doing the ESL. So that person has a term contract, but because she was always fully certified and then moved to a position where, where now requires a, a different certification, is certified in the content and everything other than bilingual, that's one of the less than ten that we have, right?
Um, yes, yes, because bilingual certified, bilingual certified in ESL is, is, is different. ESL is intended for secondary. But if the individual is bilingual certified, can that person be moved, let's say, to the middle school and high school with a bilingual certification? Yes, but with one condition. If that person has the bilingual certification, which is an endorsement, a supplemental, then that person, or that certification will be attached to any other certificate, for example, if the person gets certified for four to eight, that certification will attach to the four to eight. But when that person got certified at the lower grade, and that bilingual certification was together with the content area, for example, EC through four bilingual, that certification bilingual will not be sent to the high, to the middle school, due to the fact that it was attached to the EC through four. EC through four means early childhood to the fourth grade. If it would have been a supplemental bilingual certification, I know that I've been very technical, but that is the law. That person will be asked to take, to take another test, which is the ESL certification. Why? Because that person is at the secondary level, which is middle school. So that person, even though that person is bilingual certified at, at, at the elementary, that person is going to be asked to take the ESL certification. As far as the contract, if that person had a multi-year contract, meaning, let's say, three years, and that person was moved the first year, well, that person already has a contract for the next two years. We're not going to, we're not going to ask for a new, for a new contract, because that person has a multi-year contract for two, for the next two years, that person has contract. At, at the end of that second year, at that point, we're going to revisit and we're going to look at that certification. And, and we're hoping that that person gets certified in ESL from this point to that point.
Okay, Mr. Garza, with just one more question, the, the, a term contract, a one year term contract, if next year that person does not pass their test, that person cannot be, can be non-recommended, the, the way that these other teachers were, were given the option, either they resign or, or not recommend it?
Those individu, those individu, those individuals, if they have, if they are assigned to, if they're assigned to to a duty that requires a bilingual certification or an ESL certification, and that person does not meet the criteria, and at the end of next year, that certification, or that contract expires, there is a very good possibility, good possibility that Mr. Wussman might not recommend that individual. So the goal that we're extending that to give them an opportunity for them to get the, the ESL or bilingual certification.
So that's why they were put in resource, right?
That it depends on the, that it depends on the principal, if the principal wants to assign that individual as a resource, and we have several principals that want to have individuals in resource or dyslexia, and that, that duty, or that position, not duty, but that position does not require the ESL or the bilingual certification, the principal has that right to do that. The principal has the authority to, to assign the individuals based on their certification or the, based on the performance of the individuals.
I, I'm just wondering, or has, has it ever happened before that a principal, all of a sudden, just, just recommends a teacher from a whole other campus that they're not familiar with, to come and teach resource in their school? Had that ever happened before?
Have we had individuals being moved from one campus to another? Yes, and we will continue doing.
Ever recommended, Mr. Garza, a principal recommended a teacher without going out for interviews, without knowing, you know, anyone that wanted to apply, without knowing any information regarding that teacher. Just ask a teacher, you know what, I want this teacher from, you know, BME to come work here at DGG, and I want to put him in resource, because that's just who I want.
If, if the principal asks for assistance, if the principal asks for help, if the principal asks for an additional teacher, and the superintendent knows that we have a surplus of teachers in another campus, the principal, and the superintendent has the authority to reassign individuals from one campus to another campus. And you don't have, you don't have to advertise, either prince, the superintendent has that authority to move teacher X from this campus to this other campus.
Mr. Garza, and Mr. Wussman, if I may, I'm. Mr. Asa, Mr. Woodman, if I may, I'm sure by the time you all bring these recommendations to the board, it's because obviously you all do know what you're doing, and you've done the research, and you know what the qualifications are, and if it can and cannot be done by the time you bring it to the board. So having said all that, thank you for all that information you gave us, that we know you know you're doing your jobs. So having said all that, if, if.
I'd like to just ask one question, because I'm, I'm just going back to what Ms. Asa Galván said, and I just want to make sure myself. And, and I, and I know that you guys said it right now, but I just want to clarify. We don't, I know that they were saying, you know what, that, the individual that they're talking about, you know, is, is, you know, in the same boat as the other. It, it's not the same situation, right? In other words, because if, if, if that person would have been, in other words, employed, in other words, this other person should be employed also. In other words, we don't know the whole thing, but it, they're not in the, in other words, in other, in other words, it's, it's, it's not the same situation. That's what I'm saying.
Everybody's different. And the principals are going to bring the recommendations, and Mr. Woodman, Mr. Asa are going to do their due diligence, make sure that that's what needs to be done.
Well, yeah, I know, that's convenient to say.
I'm just asking, is, because they were kind of insinuating right now that, you know what, no, you know, one's being favored over the other, and I don't know, but they're saying, one's being favored, that's kind of what it sounds like. One's being favored over the other, they have the same qualifications, and that one is being favored over the other. My, my question is, is that is not the case, correct?
Mr. Asa, let me ask you this way. If the teacher that resigned, if she would have been placed in resource, could she have stayed in her position, in, in a resource position? Because she had, if the principal would have recommended that person, could she have stayed in resource and been recommended one more year?
The answer is yes, but, but, again, there has a big but, and I want for you to listen to this. The individual would have moved from a probationary contract to a term contract without having, without being bilingual certified.
Okay, so again.
This, this gentleman is being recommended as a term contract. It's the same.
That person already has a term contract, Ms. Galván. He already has a contract. He already has a term contract.
Let me explain, because things are taken way out of context here.
Definitely.
Yeah, that, that's.
Let me just clarify. What, in, in, in La La Land, or in some other district, if there are two different cases, and I'll explain. One case is a probationary person on the fourth year already, on the fourth year. The only way that person can come back is, even though they're not fully certified, that we give them a term contract, which is not going to happen. I'm not going to recommend somebody that's been on four-year probationary, and then give them a term contract. That's not going to happen. I don't think a principal will recommend that.
Mr. Mr. Woodman?
Another situation would be where you have somebody on a term contract, okay, and more than one year, and we say, maybe we need to reevaluate his, and give him one more chance, but tell him, you know what, we're going to bring you down to a one-year term contract, not probation. He, he already has a term contract, and now he's going down to a one-year term contract, which is very different from somebody that, let's just say, has a probationary contract, and we want to help him out and give him a term contract. That, that, if it's, especially if it's not a certified individual, fully certified individual. If that makes any sense?
It, it makes sense, but both are not fully certified, not fully certified. I just want to clarify that. They are both not fully certified.
Yes, but one of them has a term contract, and one of them has a probationary contract. So let me, just like you're trying to say something, ma'am, it's completely, you're correct. Neither one, but then the difference is, one is termed, and one already has four years probationary. They are not the same.
What is, that's my question. How did that person end up with a term, and all these other teachers don't have that opportunity?
Maybe you can answer that, but my understanding is, they got a term contract before the rule came into play. Mr. Asa?
This is one of the newest teachers we have.
You're repeating the same, you're repeating the same, the same thing over and over again.
I think, I think this is a discussion for, obviously, whoever needs the training, because we don't do the hiring, we don't do the moving or anything. So I know that it's pretty clear, Mr. Asa, Mr. Woodman, you all know what you're doing, and you wouldn't be doing anything that is not correct to do, and we can be here all night, so we are not going to be here all night. So again, I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, I have a second by Mr. Sainz. All those in favor, say aye, or raise your hands. All those against, do otherwise. So everybody with aye. So the motion is six, zero, one absent. Motion passes. Thank you.
If I may, if I may, at any time, if anyone would like to come to my office, I'll be happy to explain in details, you know, in reference to certifications, in reference to contracts. I offer my services. If you want to have a workshop in reference to this, I, I mean, with, with, with the permission of Mr. Woodman, I'd be willing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Asa.
Thank you, sir.
Before we adjourn, I just want to make a few announcements, and one of them, again, to congratulate.
Your, your office, your office is always open for, I guess, for, 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 for those individuals that want to, I guess, in other words, clarify on a one-to-one. Mr. Asa does not hide, his office is always open, and like, I, I think somebody mentioned it, you know, I, I don't think that they want to hurt anybody. I think that Mr. Asa follows our policies, or, in other words, to the T, and, and I, I don't think he's trying to, I don't think he's targeting anybody. I don't think we're targeting anybody. I don't even know exactly the situation, but I know that, I know that there's several people, I guess, amongst it, but, you know, Mr. Asa, we, in other words, we have full faith and confidence in what you do, and, and we're not belittling anybody, but.
So, and again.
Guys are doing.
Again, before we make a motion to adjourn, I just want to make a few announcements here. One of them is, again, to congratulate Mr. Eloy Asa and his mariachi program, who have been recognized, or actually have been interviewed by the, some show that I'm not really familiar with, but I do know it's Kelly Clarkson, which is a singer, or a singer that made her way through, I think it's Americans Got, America's Got Talent. I know that aired today at 2 o'clock, and if I'm not mistaken, it will be on the Roma ISD page later. They, they, I think they recorded it, and it will be there, so congratulations. And again, that is probably something that will probably be seen worldwide, not only county, not only local, not only state. I know his video was seen worldwide, because we saw comments from people from all over the world. Congratulations to our mariachi director and program. The other one is to our seniors. We are hoping that everything goes well. I know everybody, I know our Gladiator world out there wants to come back to school. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen. We're not forgetting about our seniors. Our seniors are still loved, and they will continue being loved. Currently, Roma ISD is working with the city of Roma and getting a parade going later, later time and date in, in May, and that will happen. Just be patient. We, you are in our hearts and our minds, and you will continue being in our hearts and our minds, and we will be, so you will be celebrated in its due time. And the last thing that was just brought to my attention is there is going to be a virtual prom, of which there's a surprise. I'm not sure if it's been announced or not, but there will be a surprise, and it'll be a virtual prom, and I'm sure all our students, and probably myself and all this adults out there, will enjoy this, once they hear what the news are. Like, again, I don't know if they've already posted it or not, but there will be an awesome surprise for that virtual prom, and hopefully, most of our seniors, and not all, can attend. If there's no other, I don't know if anybody has anything else.
Just everybody stay safe.
Yeah, stay safe and stay home, and we'll see what happens after all this, all these ordinances and all these things that are being lifted to a certain extent in our curfews, but everybody stay safe. With all that being said, item number 17, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I saw move to adjourn.
And a second?
One second.
I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, second by Mr. Sainz. All those in favor, all those against? Six, zero, motion passes. And again, stay safe, stay home, and we'll be seeing you here soon. Thank you for attending, or thank you for viewing the meeting. Thank you. Good night.
God bless everyone.
God bless.